Whenever that comes on, does it?
Oh.
It's on.
It's on.
Oh, the bright red's on.
Sorry.
All right.
It comes on when we're red.
All right, call to order, meaning of the Morgantown Planning Commission. I'm going to leave a little bit of pre-meeting announcement since we have visitors today. There'll be a general comment section for the public in the beginning of things that are not on the agenda tonight. Then we'll review and approve our minutes. We'll talk about any unfinished business, then we'll go on to the new business. The staff will introduce the item, the petitioner will make a presentation if they wish. And then there'll be a public hearing, and those who wish to testify in support of the petition or in opposition to the petition can then do so. They'll need to state their name and address for the record and clearly speak into the microphone. They'll have five minutes. And at the end, the applicant may be called on to discuss any of the comments, rebuttals, or provide information to the comments. Then we'll declare the public hearing over for that application. The planning commission will discuss it and then vote. So that's the process, and so let's start out with general comments. Is there anyone from the public that wants to talk about things not on the agenda this evening? There are none. We'll move on. Minutes from July 10th, 2025.
Move for approval.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Unfinished business? I don't think we have anything.
Yes, sir.
Okay, on to new business, the first application, map 2571 AJRLC Hartman Run Road.
Good evening, planning commission, good to see you. Hope your summer's going well. I'm going to be going through the packet here, and I may try to block each slide, so I apologize for using paper, but we will recycle it. But hopefully that will provide a better visual for you to have any questions or concerns as we go. So again, this is the approximately 13-acre property. It's comprised of three parcels located at the intersection of Everlasting Lane and Hartman Run Road. The next slide shows the city's existing zoning map. As you can see, portions are in and out. This is, anything that doesn't have a color on it is actually in the county. And so you can see here is the airport. The area circled here is the approximate location of the subject site. The proposed commerce park is off the screen here. And then this is some of WVU's property that's zoned office and institutional up in this location here. This shows a view looking northeast from the intersection of Hartman and Everlasting Lane up into the site. This is another picture as you travel up Hartman, looking to your left as you're heading towards the airport, and there's an existing sign advertising that the property is for sale. And then you can see kind of at the top over here is the airport hangar that's referenced a few times in your staff report. This is another zoomed in using the parcel viewer map from the county, showing the outline of the three parcels here. So it's parcel 13, 26.1, and then this small 25-point piece of property right here. That distance from here is about 100 feet from the back of the hangar. And then from the furthest point east is a little over 1,000 feet over to the taxiway and over to the runway there. I'll also use this to show kind of reference point of some pictures that I went back up and took from the top of the, basically where the airport is. This is WVU's hangar on the back side. So again, let me go back. Oops. That's, if I'm standing back here on this, well, I'm not using this. There's the access drive here, and then I'm standing right here to take that picture. So I'm looking down through the site, right? Looking through this direction, and then another picture, I'll be looking this direction.
Jim, you're just on the other side of the road. This picture is on the other side of the road from this one.
Correct. So this picture is looking south, that's looking back towards the building itself. The next picture shows looking down onto the property.
Oops.
And this is looking back down towards the property. So this here is the intersection of Hartman and Everlasting Lane. And this is kind of where actually when the change of topography starts to lessen, this is more the flat line that's existing there now. And then this is looking off towards the southwest, so the site is actually over here off the screen. But you can see this is the runway in the area that you can see the change in grade. Interestingly enough, this is a topo map, used the West Virginia Flood Tool. So looked at the base elevation here at the intersection and went all the way up to where the hangar is located at grade, which is about 1,200 feet above sea level. And then down here at the intersection, it's about 1,030 feet above sea level. And interestingly, the change in this grade from one to another is about a little over 200 feet. And interestingly enough, Two Waterfront Place is the eighth tallest building in the state of West Virginia, fun fact. And that is 205 feet. So if you can imagine, the change in elevation is greater than the top height of the fourth building downtown. This is the overlay district that was created from the 2012 master plan update for the airport. This was created and adopted with the ordinance to establish the overlay district, the airport overlay district for the city, and we'll get back to this here shortly in a minute and give it in more detail.
Can I ask you a clarification here? If you go back to the runway, do you know what the elevation is at the runway?
Yes, the base elevation of the runway is 1,248 feet, according to the 2012 master plan update. And so here is the master plan update that was approved by the FAA. Just sort of orientation, here's the runway going kind of north-south. There's the subject site that goes off the screen here. These are the right-of-way protection zones that are highlighted here in red. And this is based on the future expansion of moving the airport from 5,000, basically linear feet, to 6,600 linear feet. And so that's what those calculations are based on. And then you can see also the subject site, and you can see the airport here, the terminal is located right there. Again, going back to the overlay district, this is the only thing that we have. And so one of the things that's in the ordinance that talks about is that anything that's within the city of Morgantown Corporation limits would be subject to these, you know, concircular, these circles going out from the site, right? So the definitions that you saw in your packet would apply only to properties that are inside the city limits, which includes this site, which is located right there on the corner of the property. Based on the overlay district and the way that that's calculated, you take the distance of the longest projected runway, which would be 6,600 feet, divide that by two and project that out from the center line of the runway. So the yellow box here would be what we would consider in our ordinance to be a potential noise impact zone. Again, I'm showing you that box there to show that that's how our ordinance would define it. But the example on the right-hand side is actually from the Jungland Airport in Columbus, where they had a Part 150 study completed, where they'd actually done the sound analysis. And all these contour lines you see coming in from the different runways, these orange lines are different decibel levels, right? 60, 65, 70. And so this is a more detailed analysis, but they have that study completed. We don't have that. And I think the director, Vrabel, mentioned that in his report and comments in the back of the report.
When it comes to, so let's talk about this in a minute since you're showing it to us. These lines are coming out from the runway, and how far out are they coming?
Approximately 3,300 feet, which would be half the distance of the fully potential runway of 6,600 feet. And that shows us a really crude example to show if we, you know, did the GIS analysis, you could show that. But again, that would only apply to parcels that are in the city.
Is your question about the picture on the left or the picture on the right?
Well, I guess the right, but I'm trying to, I get what's on the left. That's existing, right? So, but from the Columbus Airport, as far as the definitions of these lines, and this is, is this a 65-decibel destination or whatever?
Yeah, so they, they.
And so how far out from, not widthwise, but widthwise from the runway are these coming out?
The, I believe this line here, it's kind of, sorry, my hands. This line, this outermost line right here is the 65, I believe. This is getting into 70, 75, pretty far out from the airport.
Right, but how far out from the airport is it, what are we talking about here? So you have a runway and you have a buffer zone, right? And so on this property currently, the buffer zone's about 1,000 feet from runway to where it is currently.
Right.
What is it on this map? How are these being defined?
I don't know what that distance is on, based on, I don't know what that distance is on hand.
But what points are you trying to make with this? And tell me, maybe I didn't catch it.
Just to show the noise impact analysis based on the ordinance, and then when the, when that was presented to council, when the overlay district was created, that analysis said that the noise generated for the airport was contained on the airport property itself. It did not go off of the airport property. And just trying to show that this is, when you have this type of study, this gets down into the more detail that we don't have. But the 2012 study said that that basically wasn't an issue because the noise compatibility of 65 decibels was not going to be an issue off of the airport property.
And the star on this map is the current site that we're talking about?
Correct.
For the application?
Yep.
Okay. So what you're saying is the past analysis says it didn't go outside the yellow box, and this is inside the yellow box now?
No, actually, the analysis said the airport property itself, it did not go, it was much closer.
Oh, it didn't go into the industrial area?
It didn't go into, it didn't go off of the airport property itself.
Okay.
So if we go back to this map here. Sorry. Runway, there's the terminal up here. This is all airport property.
Okay.
So is now the appropriate time to ask questions about Director Vrabel's communications? Or would you prefer that I wait until you are done?
Whatever you think is best, whatever.
In his communication, he pointed out that the kind of airplanes that we have on site now are not the same kind as we had in 2012. They're louder, they're bigger, they're, so.
Correct.
How, do we know how the different size jet affects that noise?
No, we don't. But that's one of the reasons why in the staff report recommendations, the recommendations that are put forward, Director Vrabel is comfortable that that would mitigate anything and protect the airport from future development around it with regard to this particular site. So I wanted to provide his comments to provide context because those are what led to the recommendations you see in your report.
So my understanding, and it's very limited, of airport, when we make overlay districts at airports, et cetera, is that they produce things like these industrial zones so they can kind of protect the area around the airport from incompatible things, but also from noise, et cetera, that might be significant if you're within close proximity to the airport. And how do we know how that was developed back in the day when they made the overlay district for the airport? Was it, were the boundaries defined by some, you know, noise map or whatever? Or were they just arbitrary and they said, oh, we're going to take this land and have it developed? And this is the reason we have this footprint?
So my understanding is that Michael Baker did this study. So given their reputation, I'm assuming there was a lot of analysis in detail at that time. However, I have not reviewed that fully, that 2012 study. What I can tell you that came from that and what the overlay analysis was this map. And this, this map is what we are, you know, supposed to utilize in order to make determinations about whether something's encroaching or could encroach into what's called the runway protection zone or the different changes in surfaces, first surface, for instance, like the primary surface versus a transitional surface versus the conical surface versus, and that's all laid out in the overlay district ordinance, which I can talk about that a little bit more as well.
And as the mayor pointed out, that the, this was developed based on a different type of aircraft with a different noise level that was done pertinent back then. And we have a different kind of aircraft now, and we're going to maybe even have a bigger aircraft when 6,600 comes around. I just want to make sure that we're, this is consistent with what we're thinking about. Okay.
This seems, this, am I understanding that this map, which is what you're saying, we should be kind of going off of? This was the result of the study, but this contradicts the recommendation for?
This, that was based off and developed from the 2012 master plan when the city adopted the ordinance in 2014.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. I know, we might as well get the questions out now and then people can respond to them. So looking at the star.
Ricky, yeah. Just to put, be perfectly clear and clarify, which one of these is the actual airport overlay? So the big zoomed out one that has basically entire city limits on it is part of the overlay. But basically what's regulatory is kind of closer to the yellow box around it.
So this is the official map that was tied to the ordinance?
Right.
And it applies because it doesn't get granular, and at the time it didn't maybe do that level of analysis on a GIS with GIS?
Right.
Is that you would take those polygons and apply them as best you can to the geography.
Sure.
This was just developed as a reference. This is not official by any means.
Gotcha.
But to say, if you took our ordinance and you drew out the lines.
Correct.
Yes.
You just made a visual based off the written, black and white language.
Having said that, though, again, the 2012 study said that the impact noise, noise compatibility was not an issue off airport property. Again, we know Director Vrabel has mentioned that things have changed over time.
Yep.
But again, staff recommendations are the way to potentially mitigate that without having something like this.
Sure.
That would verify 100%.
Right. And just one more final point is that the applicant has provided this to the, I guess, to the airport, FAA or whomever, a study, a noise study?
No, they haven't done it. And based on our current ordinance, they don't have to.
Okay, all right.
At this time.
Sure. At the point of rezoning, they do not. It's the point of development, they would have to.
It's the establishment erection of the use.
Perfect.
Right. But again, we can talk about this as well. There are each one of those circles that go around the airport. There are different levels of review that needs to happen.
Yeah.
And once I get into a couple more slides, we'll talk about that. So again, this is just the, oh, I'm sorry. Any more questions or? Okay. So this is the comprehensive plan update. Again, this is the airport. There's the property here at the corner. Looking at the future land use map, business and technologies, the general characterization of this type of property. And you look at, it includes multifamily, commercial uses, office uses, green space where appropriate, so on and so forth. And so I think one of the reasons why that was just looked at as, moving from maybe more of what you would think of historically as an industrial use with smokestacks and things like that to more like retail, office park, warehousing type things is just as an example, if you've been to South Point in Cannonsburg, PA, that's a large office park complex. And again, it's not next to their airport, but it's a mix of uses. So that's why the multifamily was included in that land use characterization. So you see all these out parcels here. They're all commercial office buildings, right? But at the center, this is mixed-use development, three, four-story buildings with retail on the first floor and residence on the second floor. So that was, I think, the thought of including that in the, in the future land use map characterization. Again, this is another area of the property here. This is, this is going north, if we're looking out this way. Here's WVU's existing hangar. Here's the access drive that comes around. This is where I took the pictures, looking back down towards the site. And again, that change in elevation from 1,030 feet up to 1,200 when you look, when you go this way. And just to put that again into context, to show the change in elevation, again, baseline is 1030. According to the overlay ordinance, the baseline for the airport runway is 1,248. That's here. The hangar is located here in this analysis. And the proposed development, the townhomes, they'd be situated below the baseline, even with the proposed height of like, say, like a max of 40 feet for each structure, which just kind of represents, it would still be below the baseline of where the hangar sits now, which is even lower than where the actual baseline for the airport runway is itself.
It's, and again, I'll show my lack of knowledge of engineering and physics, but is there a formula for how decibel levels might change with changes in elevation? I'm sure there's one for distance, but is, how do you factor in elevation?
That I can't comment on.
Okay. I, it's hard to ask, just in case there was something obvious.
No, you're fine. So the applicant, so this is a map of the current property as it's zoned now, the industrial. The applicant's proposal was to modify it to an M3 district. And speaking with Director Vrabel and staff and looking at it, a reasonable and thoughtful approach to looking at that to rezone, to facilitate development in the future and to allow it to have potentially more marketability for more uses, was to look at rezoning it to a B2 district, which was part of staff recommendation, which would still include a multifamily townhouse component, but it would also allow for other commercial uses that, in terms of a planning, a noise planning compatibility analysis wouldn't have as much impact because of the use of when it's being used and those types of things.
So the predicate finding to the staff recommendation is that this application is consistent with the comprehensive plan?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
I'm sure we have more questions, but let's go ahead and move on here. So is the petitioner here and if you don't want to discuss this?
Come on, Scott. My name's Scott Copan, and I'm with T-Road Engineering, and I'll be representing ARJ to discuss the project. The, if we can kind of do things maybe a hair different, because I think some of these slides, there might be a little bit of confusion.
Sure.
Can we go back to that airport overlay district?
Yes.
That's my larger pointer.
Yes, you can.
Let me flip back, sorry, here.
There you go.
So the airport overlay district, which you can see encompasses virtually all of the city of Morgantown.
Right.
All right. And these different rings indicate different, different items of concern based on the runway. This map really doesn't show anything with regards to noise concerns. This is showing the primary runway surface, which is the yellow area in the middle. The approach surface, and when they say surface, they literally mean an elevation surface. Now, these surfaces don't exist on the ground. They're in the air. They are the approach angles and departure angles for the airplanes. So when you look at this map, the big, the primary concerns normally are your approach and departure and making sure that no structure is ever built at an elevation that intersects these surfaces. And those surfaces don't extend out flat. They extend out at an angle, at an upward angle. The area, it's real hard to see, but there's two horizontal lines in here which don't touch the property we're discussing, but they are, they run parallel to the airport runway. Those are like hard line. You don't, don't really want to do stuff in there because of safety reasons and FAA rights and things like that. Then you've got the horizontal surface, which is the airport, based on the airport elevation. That truly is airport elevation grade, which is somewhere around 1,240, I believe, 1,246. And it extends horizontally out, and you don't want to, you don't want to be over top. You don't want anything to approach into that. And that's mainly for safety reasons. If you have an airplane coming in that's, you know, having trouble and needs to be at a low elevation to make an approach and land safely. And then you, the last one shown here is the conical surface. And that extends up off of the runway, just like the approach and departure. It extends up, but it's 360 degrees around the runway. It extends upward into the sky. And you don't want to breach that surface with any type of structure, again, because you've got planes that might be making trips around before they can land or doing whatever. But from an overlay, airport overlay district, virtually all of the city of Morgantown is in the overlay district for the airport. So we're not a unique property here. Just because we're close to the airport doesn't, doesn't mean from the airport overlay district that we're actually inside of or causing any problems with these, these surfaces. I'll show you here in a little bit, but our, our highest elevation is going to be about 110 feet lower than the runway elevation. So we're well below the runway. We are well below all the surfaces that are shown in this overlay district. So we don't have that concern to have to worry about.
If I may just.
Absolutely.
Based on the city's ordinance, when the FAA does need to be consulted ahead of time, in the primary approach or transitional surface, if the construction alteration is below 1,248 feet, there doesn't need to be consultation with the FAA. And the horizontal surface is 1,398 feet. So just to provide context to what Scott's speaking to.
Yeah. And if, if, can you go to the one that shows the sound?
Yeah. Maybe.
So I just, one question. So when the runway gets extended out, will the horizontal surface need to be extended some too? Or is that wide enough for?
Well, when the.
For whatever's coming.
Extended. This drawing shows the runway extended.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Now, what will change on, when the runway is extended, are these red areas here, which are basically, you're, you're not going to do anything shape, form, or fashion of any kind. Also, if you can go back to the other one real quick. What will change is this, these two purple areas, well, this purple area actually, will push about 1,000 feet further to the south. The southern limits of the heel and the southern limits of the red will also push in that direction. But it won't push laterally, left and right.
Okay.
Because these are based off the limits of the runway. So the runway is getting longer. I don't believe.
Not wider, not wider.
Correct.
So in the buffer, it doesn't need to change east to west, just north and south. Okay.
That makes sense. All right, so that.
Which one?
Talk about the noise.
Which one do you want to do, Scott?
The noise one?
Okay.
Just real quick, just to clarify something. So on, and I know what Ricky's trying to show here, but this, this map, well, very colorful and informative, doesn't have anything to do with the Morgantown Airport. Okay. Okay? This does. And if I understand correctly, what this says is anything inside of this yellow box is something that we should probably consider noise, a potential concern, right? And to identify, there's two things to think about here. One is the airplanes coming in on approach, and as you're aware, as they come over this area right here, where West Run and Student Housing, I think sort of was originally called when I was there, is that, those planes are basically at the same elevation of the runway, they're 20, 30 feet high. And these, these buildings exist in this area now. There's several, and I realize they're outside of the city, I'm just putting things in context. So all the planes that come in today, that came in in 2012, or that will ever come in in the future, are going to fly over top of all these buildings. The bigger concern, I think, and was identified by the director, because we're laterally, our nearest, our nearest structure, the property is about 1,000 feet, but the nearest structure is going to be closer to 1,200 feet from the taxiway, I believe. And then it's another 200 feet, I think, the center of the runway, so we're talking 1,400, 1,500 feet horizontally, plus the 100 and so feet below it. And yes, elevation makes a difference, and yes, they have equations to help figure that out. I'm not a sound engineer, I just know they exist. But the bigger one that we probably need to really consider long-term is the hangar. The, the airport director identified that they do maintenance out of that hangar, they do engine burnups out of that hangar. So effectively, that's no different than an airplane taking off at full power on a runway 1,500 feet away versus an engine being 400 feet away and running up to full power, full noise, that we need to consider. Now, what I will say about that is, we're still, our highest building in here is still going to be close to 100 feet below that hangar. Because, I'll show you a, a map here in a few moments, but we're not, we're not grading up in this area, it gets too steep, it's too high, we're staying out of it, as we have things right now. And the hangar is a physical barrier. They're not, they're not bringing the planes out the back of the hangar and like blasting jets over top of, you know, the property. They're, they're pulling things out here and doing runups. So there is actually a physical barrier. And what we understand is that for today, for the purpose of rezoning, we understand we need to acknowledge that this is a concern. And that at the site plan review, we should have to provide information to show that this does not, that we're not causing an issue with the 65 decibel level. And if it would happen to show that, that it stipulated that either a sound mitigation barrier would have to be installed, or potentially sound insulation in that, basically the exterior walls of the structures, you can do it in that manner as well, so that that interior noise level doesn't routinely exceed 65 decibels. We're, we're aware of those concerns and, and willing to deal with them.
Just for context, do you know what decibel level a jet engine would have?
I, I, I do not. I'm not an audio engineer. I am not. But I'll bet you it's pretty high.
I will say, I used AI to try to find that information out, so take it for what it's worth, but I actually do have some numbers.
Yeah.
And so I guess maybe to point out here in context, you're asking for rezoning of that whole area, even though you're planning on building something next to the hangar?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Just to, you know.
Yeah.
I get it, and, but we are, yeah, talking about that. So from what I found, and I said, you know, I don't know how far it is from the hangar. So I say, okay, what if it's 100 or 200 feet from the hangar? And according to what I've found, that if you're ramping up a jet engine at, at that close to the hangar, you get something on the order of 150 decibels, which is above what you would punch your eardrum with. If you go 200 feet out, you're 118 decibels, which is also pretty significant. So I don't know. Again, I'm not an engineer, and I just, I just pulled this out real quick to see if there, you know, was something I could find. But it, it sounds like it's a significant amount of noise, and I get it, a building could be buffered, but I think it's something to think about.
But I think there's, to keep in mind, you know, for the process of today and what you're, and I, I understand exactly what you're saying, that, you know, there's jet engines that might produce 150 decibel, but is that sitting on a 747, or is that sitting on a Learjet?
Um, I, I put it, I put it in as a, as a turbofan, whatever, a small jet.
Okay.
So I don't know, again, I didn't, I didn't fact check it.
Yeah.
But I, I, I think that we kind of would need someone to provide us with professional information if we're going to allow something to be as close to the hangar as we're talking about to be comfortable.
And residential especially.
Yeah.
For future city liability, if, if they buy a townhome in 2028, and they're like, well, it wasn't that big of a deal, but by 2035, we have even bigger planes, and they're like, what the heck? This is more than I anticipated.
Well, and I think I can speak to that in, in just a couple minutes. So in the context of the actual rezoning and, and the requirements to, to be able to do that and the goals of, of rezoning, I mean, I think Ricky did a great job in pointing out the, the purpose to allow rezoning and the things that are set forth in the, in the previous plans. One is to promote the redevelopment of underutilized land in, in the city, and particularly around the airport, and I can tell you this is underutilized land. I've been involved with this particular piece of land since 2017, I believe. At that time, we were, it was another, another concept D company under the same entity, but work was done there in 2017 and 2018 to try to, to try to make this, I guess, what the zoning is today. And it just, it, it's not a desirable piece of property to be quite the one.
So since you bring this up, and I was going to ask Ricky this too, but maybe both of you can kind of, so you probably saw the Dominion Post article, and it mentioned an issue that was trying to be done in 2016 about development, but the development was stopped because of FAA, something that had to do with FAA regulations. But it doesn't tell much, and that's, I don't know if that's pertinent today or not, and if it was pertinent then.
I have been the engineer who's designed this site multiple times since they first, since the, the group I'm representing first purchased it in 2015, 2016, and I never once heard anything about an FAA issue.
Yeah, so it was, they quoted the airport director at the time, and they said the development was stalled because of that, and who knows, maybe it was, you know, not accurate, but I just don't know if we have any documentation on that, so.
I did not, I did look. Again, I would just point to, again, the overlay district itself and the restrictions, all those different, as you move out from the airport runway and the height restrictions, and what's being presented is well below any of those concerns.
So the, one of the primary goals is to promote the redevelopment of underutilized land, and that is underutilized land, it's several acres of, at this current time, untaxable land for anybody. Also, the, the plan identifies business and technology as a target land use for this area. And based on a comprehensive plan, business and technology includes multifamily dwellings, civic institutional, there's several land uses in there that, that fall underneath that business and technology. So what we're wanting to do falls in line with comprehensive plans and what's been identified. The, let me see, make sure I'm not missing one. And of course, the, the others, just to facilitate economic activity, which, like I said, that land sitting there has no, has no taxable value right now because of, I believe, how would, the ownership. So we're talking about, if you can pop, pop it up now. What we're looking to do.
Where you're quoting the, the principle to facilitate economic activity in the city says for a wide range of commercial land use types, not residential.
Well, as I.
I'm just pointing out for clarification, the wide range, I had that highlighted, and it's like, well, that doesn't actually apply here.
Yeah. And that, and I think that that, again, that's, or, oh, okay.
The reason why I showed the example from Cannonsburg is because that's, I think, the long-term vision of what the development around that space would look like.
Let's talk about process for a minute, because I'm afraid we're jumping process here. And what's before us today is whether this, rezoning application is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's not a site review, it's not a development of significant impact review.
Right.
So although Scott's kind enough to show us the end state, that's not what we're talking about here today. What we should be focused on is, is this zoning amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan? So you heard Ricky say it was. Do you agree with Ricky that this zoning amendment is consistent with the complaint?
I do.
And that's my, I think that's, that's the question before us today. We will get to this, I believe, right? This is a DSI, this is, this is something we're going to regulate in detail.
Right.
Including noise, including light, including traffic, including landscaping, all that stuff, right?
Yes, sir.
Not now.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll briefly touch that, and that's very hard to see, and I, and I apologize. But really, the purpose of that is just to show the elevation difference that we were talking about, to show that we're not utilizing the entire property. The hangar's here, we're several hundred feet away from it, we're down over the hill. We're not, you know, the, the airport runway is 1,200 feet this way, again, 100 and some feet above us. That's, that's what this is for, is just to show the context of what we're, what we're looking to do.
But you're aware, Scott, that our DSI process, we get to look at all of this, right?
Yep, yep.
And you're going to work with us to get this to where it should be, if we approve the development.
That's correct.
We're not approving the development tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, I understand. There were, and I don't, it's, it's okay to speak to these three.
Yes.
Conditions. So there were three, three things identified by, by Ricky and staff that they felt should be part of this map amendment process. One, that the, the developer implemented policy that requires renters, buyers, et cetera, to sign a waiver, that gets recorded when the land transfers, or when a renter would take occupancy, in this case, it would be when the land transfers, basically to acknowledge that they're buying a, buying a home next to an airport. That makes total sense, there's no questions there. We also now understand that that doesn't have anything to do with actual noise level, it's just a, this one just makes them acknowledge they're buying a property, it's property next to an airport. That makes total sense, there's no, no concerns. The second was that developer property execute an aviation agreement over the property with, with the city, which basically would allow them access, in simplest terms, access at any time for any reason, to ensure the safety and, safety, safe operation of the airport. A tree's in the way, needs to come down, anything. Again, that's a no-brainer, there's no concerns there, absolutely willing to, willing to execute that. And the third one, and I think this is the one that, that identifies the biggest concern here, which would be potentially noise, is that we acknowledge at the site plan review stage that a sound study of whatever level required by staff is going to have to be done, not only for the current 2013 airplanes that are, are in the, the plan, or today's airplanes, but also potential future airplanes, that we need to identify and, and do that sound study to ensure that long-term, again, in 10 or 15 years, bigger planes can come and land, that we're not starting to, to break that 65 decibel level. We, we understand that. There's not going to be any fighting over that. But we also believe that that's something that should be handled at the site plan review, not today. We just want to publicly acknowledge it. And with that, I'm, I'm done, and I apologize if I spoke too long. Any questions, or is that later?
Where relation to this is the hangar? I'm sorry, I lost orientation here.
It's up here.
Up there.
For context, just Hartman Run Road, down here, Everlast Inlet, here. Old city, city, fill areas in here, and the runway is in this direction, about 1,200 feet. And if you guys want them, I have printouts of that as well, I can.
Other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're up in the public hearing, so if anyone wants to speak in support of the application, please come forward, state your name. Okay. Hearing none? I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry. Please, go ahead. I didn't look up what happens. Name and, name and address, please.
Sure, I'm Russ Rodgerson, I'm actually here on behalf of the Long County Development Authority, or owner of the property. We, you know, we have the, a contract agreement to sell land based on rezoning and allowed use. So basically, this property has been owned by Development Authority for some time, we've been very much involved in development around the airport, and, you know, we have had many people look at this piece of property for maybe appropriate use, but usable space for tangible, economically beneficial development of that type has not proven to be a factor based on the topo of the property. So I just want to point that out, and obviously, the Development Authority is, is interested in selling this, this property and, and, you know, so I'm not a technical guy either, so I appreciate your taking a look at this and looking at it from the perspective of what you're charged and, and, you know, would, would hope that that turns into a positive outcome for, for our prospective buyer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak for the application? Okay. Hearing none? And, does anyone want to speak in, against the application? Hearing none?
Staff recommend that the, the property be rezoned, not from a B, to an R3, but to a B2 district with the conditions listed in your pack, and I think we've touched on them several times already, but happy to reiterate if necessary.
Do you want to discuss that issue here?
I'm just looking at the land use table. Really, the most, the most problematic use for the new user in a B2 that's not allowed in industrial is the multifamily, the dwellings, right? Is there any, we have to assume that this will not end up being townhomes. If we rezone it, anything in that zone can be built. So is there anything that's allowed in B2 that would be a problem for the airport specifically? Like lights or?
Good question. Even though it would allow for a multitude of commercial buildings, again, from a noise compatibility and planning perspective, and speaking with Director Vayable, no, that is not necessarily a concern. The reason that the conditions are what they are is because the intent there is to do a residential component on this property.
But nothing, nothing that can potentially be built in a B2 is too tall, too bright, too, anything that would create a conflict for being next to the airport. too, anything that would create a conflict for being next to the airport.
Again, to Mr. Stranko's point, that would really be at site plan review, and that's where the overlay ordinance really does come into effect, because of the height restrictions, you know, if a proposal was to do something into the runway protection zone, like Mr. Copen mentioned, there are strict rules about how that has to be done, if at all, and so, no, this wouldn't be necessarily part of that consideration.
Okay, Mr. Stranko's point is well taken, but again, we have to assume that anything that is permissible in B2 is an option.
Sure.
If it's rezoned tonight, someone else could buy it next week and build any of those permissible, a hotel, or, I just want to make sure that none of those would be problematic.
I think the mayors make an excellent point, but we need to remember that all of those will be regulated. I mean, we have a regulatory process, Scott's familiar with as well, but this is too early, really, to start talking about the details, because things get said, promises get made, and then things get changed as we continue down the regulatory process. So I think it's important we keep our focus tonight on the question of whether this application is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and if it is, that we say so to City Council, and City Council can then take whatever action they think is appropriate.
Can I bring up one more issue on, there's another component to that in my limited reading of the FAA rules on this, and it's electronic interference, too. Now, we have a 2012 report, or whatever, that essentially has the regulatory elements in it from the FAA with an old runway that isn't current planes, and isn't talking about the 737 that potentially could land there once it's 6,000 feet plus, which apparently can. And if we allow something to change now, and it's in place, and then the runway's extended, and now the FAA says, hey, you can't have that there, what are we going to do? We're going to say, well, I'm sorry, airport, you've extended your runway, but you can't land that 737 there. So to me, it's like, we need more information on a more updated report from the airport and the FAA on what they need as far as anything that might impact in these buffer zones or whatever with a longer runway. Maybe there is nothing else, I don't know, but I think it's a black box, and I have concerns with that right now.
I don't agree. I don't agree that that's not the issue in front of us tonight. All those are great points, Mr. Chairman, but those are points that are going to have to be dealt with by staff and by us in subsequent regulatory actions.
And again, that the overlay district was based on the assumption of the 2012 plan, airport plan, that the runway would be extended to 660.
Right, but the 2012 plan does not account for the planes that are going to land in that runway. That's what the airport director tells us, correct?
That's what his comment was.
Right, so the 2012 plan is already antiquated. Current plans, planes are landing which are beyond that, we have this buffer zone, I guess it's working or whatever, but, you know, I think we're potentially painting the city into a corner, should we allow development to happen, and then we hear the rules that are different.
No, I get it, we're not allowing development to happen, we're just saying that we're reclassifying this from industrial to R3, that's it. The development happening comes later.
B2. Not R3, B2. Can I ask your take on something, if, in your argument, again, is well taken, we are only looking at whether or not it's compatible with the comprehensive plan?
That's it.
How do the staff recommendations fit into us determining whether, I mean, if we're going so far as to say future residents are going to have to sign a waiver, how is that?
Yeah, I object to staff recommendations, I think they are untimely. And I'll ask Mr. Yeager, do you agree with me that staff recommendations are untimely here?
It could be done at this point, but also at site plan review.
It will be done at site.
Does the planning commission have the authority to put conditions on a rezoning?
How so? The question is, it's a binary question, is this consistent with comprehensive plan, or is it not? That's the question. That's what we have to tell council.
So then, to your point, Mr. Stranko, maybe that second recommendation is revised to say at site plan review, as just, here's what the commission...
And that's what Mr. Copen talked about, I think he agreed that that was the appropriate time to do that, and he's agreed to do that.
Was the comprehensive plan this granular? That it counted for things like this? I mean, with broad strokes, we didn't get into individual areas.
The comprehensive plan is a strategic document, it's not supposed to be granular. What's granular is the development of significant impact in the site plan review that we're about to do for this project. But if we jump over the lines, things get confused. I think there's just one question for us tonight, and I think it is that staff recommends consistent with the comprehensive plan.
So when the comprehensive plan, maybe I'm reading this correctly, when the comprehensive plan is approved, this is an industrial area site. Did it change, did it recommend changing this area into what we're talking about tonight?
Yeah, in terms of the characterizations and the permitted land uses, yes, there was a shift, right? To look at trying to build, like, business parks that have actually more mixed uses in them, as opposed to being traditional, just warehouse districts and office park buildings, but to do something a little more different.
Mr. President, I see about two cents of how to vote on a motion here. I think, I think that this does meet the comprehensive plan as far as being a research and development type of thing from, I had a lot of concern with the initial application being just for multifamily, but going to a mixed commercial district is in line with the future intent of what the character is supposed to be of this area. I think there's a ton of heartburn about, given that we're looking for the general welfare of the city of Morgantown, that it would be just residential, but how it's presented as a B2 district that does meet that, but I do, I would, I wouldn't take the staff's recommendation of having these conditions on there. I personally, I don't think that we have the authority to put conditions on a, on a, this type of request. So I would vote this time. Correct. So I would vote yes without staff's, or, without the conditions, basically, for that reason.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion.
Oh, it's like a bad motion.
So would this come back before the planning commission for a significant impact?
100%.
And at that time, we would have the ability to...
And that's where it'd be probably most appropriate to, yes.
As you can see, we'll look at the details.
So, let me pose a question, if, if we had a report from the airport that maybe said that this, if our comprehensive plan had been written differently, had we had an updated report from the airport in this area at the time? And arguably, we did this at the time, and the plan, the airport plan was antiquated, and we didn't know that.
Self-position on top of a supposition, I don't...
I'm sorry, I'm not allowed to say.
All I can do is deal with the plan that's in front of us.
I'm just trying to be a little pragmatic about this.
And it is consistent. Motion, second, call the question.
Don't think residential.
I agree.
Need to look at that in our next plan. When people read business and technology, they don't think residential, they don't think townhome.
There may be another terminology or something.
So any other discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, we'll call the question. Those in favor? Those opposed? There you have it.
So we forward this to City Council with the finding that it is, the application's consistent with the comprehensive plan. That's Brennan's motion.
Yes, without the conditions.
Without the conditions.
Sorry, thank you for summarizing that. Like, those of you who want to leave after this application can, but please do quietly, and if you're going to talk, go far enough away, we can't hear you. All right, second application for this evening, I can find my paper, map 2572, Seth Timberman, 65 Beach Street.
Yes, sir.
I can have a go through the packet here in front of us, I'm not sure if, is the applicant here? Yes, there, yes, yes, sir. All right. Again, so here's the location of the site, located here, and here's the current zoning map, so we show an R1A district, there's B2 here, industrial here, and B1 in this general area. Here's the location of the property, it's a three-unit multifamily dwelling that's located here. And just for context, because the R1A district does not allow multifamily dwellings, or two-family dwellings for that matter, staff went out and then drove the neighborhood and identified at least four of the locations that are presumed to be, and we confirmed at least two of those are active two-family dwellings that have a letter of compliance on file with our code enforcement office. The other two, one we need to do some code enforcement on, and the other one, we're working on that as well. But at least two of these properties here are active and have letters of compliance. The issue before the planning commission is, is that this property lost its grandfather status when it sat vacant at the end of its letter of compliance in 2020. The applicant purchased the property, made investments into it, and in order to be compliant, is asking for the R2 zoning designation. The other thing I should mention is that, you know, the opportunity was there to ask for a higher intensity density in an R3, to ask for the R3 district, and that was not asked for. So even if this zoning petition is approved and goes through council, gets approved, the applicant would still have to request a conditional use permit from the Board of Zoning Appeals in order to operate it as a three-unit multifamily dwelling. That will conclude staff's report.
Okay, does the applicant want to discuss this?
Good evening, thank you for your time, I don't know exactly what you guys want to add.
Just, tell us your name and...
My name is Seth Timberman, I reside, you know, if I had addressed you, right, 102 Opusca Road, Fairmont, Virginia. Real Thesir Partners is the owner of this property. It's a Virginia-based company, but when I relocated here to Morgantown two and a half years ago, we've brought stuff here, we're investing in the city as well. We've purchased multiple properties. Since I moved in the last two and a half years, when we purchased this one, we renovated, condemned, it's gone through the inspection process and the permitting process, it's got all new electrical, all new patch plumbing. The deck structure that you see on the front there is relatively, almost brand-new, all new appliances, it's fully remodeled, it wasn't just a patch job, like, it's pretty compliment the city I found. So it was done up to code, Drew Cantus has been a part of it since before construction even started, so...
So you guys had permits for all of this?
Yes.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, actually, I met with Drew prior to even starting anything, and talked to him about the process, because I was new to Morgantown, I was new to the permitting and construction process here, and I wanted to make sure that I had all my Ts dotted and eyes crossed, and I think this is last part of it, as far as just to get it zoned. It's obviously, I understand, there's a lot of buildings in the area that are single-family homes that have been converted into multifamily and multi-use and stuff like that to house smaller sets and things of that nature. This is not, this was built as three units, one on top of each other, it just so happens that it's in a place right now that is R1. My understanding is, is if this building would not have lost its status and gone on the vac construction thing, that it would still be compliant, and grandfather did, but because the previous owner, who has a lot of properties that are much worse than this one, let it go, that it lost its status, and that's unfortunate, because that's not what it, it was built to be exactly what it is.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I don't think, I'm happy to answer any question.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Is there off-street parking for this property?
Yes, so in the front there, there's room for probably four cars parked front to back.
Yeah, I couldn't tell how big the...
Yeah, yeah, so those, you have a car length, not a full-size truck, it's an eight-foot bed, but like a regular sedan you can do there, you can put a parked car there on the side, and then actually behind the building, where that deck on the right hand side of the building, you see that small, that's been torn off, that deck was, needed to go away. Fire marshal and I had conversations, because it has a sprinkler system in the building, that that egress point did not have to be there, and that got removed, there's actually room for at least two, if not three, cars to park back behind it as well.
Okay, this neighborhood is something Director Yeager and I have looked at, there's an issue with some short-term rentals, and the neighbors experience a lot of parking issues, so if this property's been vacant for a while, my question was, what are the off-street parking requirements for the current zoning versus what we're proposing? But, seems like it's fine.
Yeah, and that would be visited at the Board of Zoning Appeals, they would take that into consideration.
Do you know when it was originally built?
No, I don't. It's a great question, is there anything in here about that?
Probably not, I'm glad this is careful.
Our records indicate going back to 1994, but it was probably there before then as well.
Yeah, I don't have the tax...
Okay, no worries. Any other questions?
One more. How were you, when were you informed that this was non-conforming? I mean, you did the permit process, and then someone said you couldn't occupy it because it's a single-family dwelling, basically?
Yeah, it was after, it was after everything was complete, and I was actually, I was actually told by someone that I was, I had my letter, my letter of occupancy, and then...
Found out that it was.
Found out, and that's when Ricky met with me and Drew, and we had this conversation to have this hearing.
So no fault of your own?
It was, yeah, I was not aware, for sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, would anyone like to speak for the application? Hearing none, anyone would like to speak against the application? Okay, Ricky?
Staff moves to approve as presented.
I have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
Has legal done any review whether this is considered spot zoning?
Yes, we've looked at several different cases, and we'll continue to look at that, but because it's context-specific, that really makes it so that, in our mind, it's not spot zoning.
And it's consistent with the, sorry.
Sorry. You sound like a lawyer. You sound like a lawyer.
Context-specific. You waved your hand when you said it. I think it is spot zoning, but it is what it is, this is a property owner that got stuck, and we need to, I think we need to un-stuck him.
How about the comprehensive plan, is it consistent with new approaches to this? We're going to kind of relook at these areas.
And it specifically mentions in that district is to look at the context, so it wouldn't maybe do a cart block, like, just to rezone it to all R2, R3, right? But even if other applications would come in the future, we would look at, you know, is it already pre-existing, what's, you know...
Any other questions?
I'm glad you said it, Tim, I thought it was pretty spot-on spot zoning.
How can it not be?
Because it's not spot, I'm like, but it is.
Context.
But, yeah, add your stars together, and, and it doesn't. All right. Any other questions or discussion? Do you have a motion?
Moving forward to City Council, the recommendation would be approved.
Second?
Second.
All right, those in favor?
Thank you for reading the bag, it was great.
Like the entertainment.
Keeps things interesting.
Keeps us real.
Good luck with your project.
All right, the next application, TXT 2536, administrative for tree and shrub list.
Yes, so we have several members of the true board here tonight to talk about the application, but essentially, this is an update to the landscaping provisions, and Table 1367.1101 of the city's planning and zoning code. The last update to the tree, approved tree and street shrub list was in 2017, and so I know that the boards were working on this for some time, and have recommendations for the planning commission to consider.
Are we going to, we're going to hear from the board?
Yes.
Sure.
Educate us.
Yes, absolutely.
They're buddy-narborists.
My name is Greg Dahl, I live at 105 Belvy Drive in Morgantown.
My name is Greg Dahl. I live at 105 Belge Drive in Morgantown, actually technically outside the city limits, but such is life. We've worked and approved from the tree board, I'm the chair of the tree board. We approved this a couple meetings ago to bring to the commission and to council. It's just a small tweaks and updates, nothing major. Removing a couple trees from the approved list, putting a couple trees, new species or new cultivars of trees, of various evergreen, tall, short, something like that, just minor adjustments to bring it up to, more or less up to date. Please.
One question about crepe myrtles were taken off of us. Can you just...
I've had same question. I was like, why did you do that?
I'm just curious as to why.
Our biggest concern with crepe myrtles is they occasionally, with a small, with a very cold snap, die back, and for this is not saying for anybody's house, but this is for this, where we have jurisdiction of trees and other landscaping that's going on, trying to keep them out so we don't have to worry about dead wood falling down or something like that. That was the primary concern.
Thank you.
Please.
How do you decide what's a small tree versus a large, medium to large tree? Because trident maple got moved from the small tree list and added to the...
Isn't that interesting? Yes, that was done by the city of Arbus. We could, we could nuance that all day long. I think it's probably better appropriate to put into the medium rather than small. One of the primary reasons is it gets somewhat wide, so if you're putting it in a restricted area right next to a road, knowing that since it's larger, it's a medium rather than a small, you would think that as a landscaper, landscape architect, you might not choose that in a confined space. Also, if there's overhead distribution lines, they might realize it's a medium-sized tree, and it might approach the 10-foot clearance needed for the utility districts. So I think that's the reason why we moved it to a medium, just to show that it's slightly...
Requires a little extra space.
Exactly.
Thank you for your work.
See, we read our packets.
Yeah, that's great.
I appreciate your work. I'm wondering why burning bush was taken out as a shrub.
It's slightly invasive by a long state. It moves around. The birds love the sieves, and they move it around, so, like barberry was also taken out, it's a very invasive plant.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Do we need to do some kind of an action on this, or what do we?
Yes. Move to approve, recommendation set forth.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we amend Table 1367.01, 1.01, to reflect the changes presented by the tree board, and thank them for their work.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Leave up the professionals.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for staying.
I propose when we know something's going to be fast and pleasant, we bid at the beginning of the agenda.
You would have missed out on all that entertainment.
Better watch out, you might be on the board next. Okay, any committee reports?
Who's adjourned?
Staff comments?
Sorry, just two comments, actually, important. At least one application is another zoning map amendment that will come back in September, and I wanted to let you know that Barb McDonald, who'd been with the city for seven years, our executive assistant, resigned. She got another exciting job opportunity closer to home, so a big loss for us, as she helps us with our agendas and getting the packets ready that we have for you every week, so, every month. So was really, I could take the opportunity to appreciate her and thank her for her service and everything she did while she's here at Morgantown.
Absolutely, yes.
I wish her all the best. So who's the new Barb?
It's going to be posted next week, so hopefully we'll have a couple good candidates.
Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Move to adjourn?
So be it.
I don't think you have to adjourn.
Good job, Mr. Chairman.